It is seven o'clock and we welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting on December 11th, 2025. Welcome the public for coming tonight. We will open with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Martineau.
Everybody rise very quick to pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda. All second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Butler and a second by Commissioner Martineau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's staff reports?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's staff report.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Butler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Are there any declarations of conflicts and abstentions from the commission members?
No.
Seeing none, we will go to item number one, which is a public hearing for a Codex Amendment, Section 10-11D-2-C, permitted principal uses in the commercial sales two, CS-2-zone. This public hearing is to consider the request of Kevin Mulvey for Questar Gas Company to amend City Code, Section 10-11D-2-C, permitted principal uses in the commercial sales -2, CS2-zone to add use 4824 gas pressured control stations to the list of permitted uses within the zone. Jacob?
Alrighty. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Jacob Hawkins from the Planning Department. So, the first item that we have for today is a request to add use 4824 to the CS2-zone. Now, use 4824 is for gas pressure control stations, and you'll see a few of those here and there throughout the city. But just to ensure, a gas pressure control station is a facility that reduces high-pressure gas from transmission pipelines to lower, safer pressures, sustainable for residential, commercial, and industrial use. A site for gas, for a gas pressure control station typically includes like an enclosed area with a maintenance shack and the necessary pipes and equipment to provide services to the area. And because this uses for utilities, no parking requirements are really necessary except those needed by employees visiting the site for maintenance and management. A gas pressure control stations are necessary utility stations that provide services to the surrounding neighborhoods and commercial buildings. The use 4824 is permitted in residential zones, but was never introduced to the commercial sales two-zone. And staff finds that since the proposed use poses no issue to residential zones, there should similarly be no issue with permitting the proposed use in the CS2-zone. So as such, staff recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the planning, sorry, to the city council for the proposed text amendment. And then here, this is kind of what one of those stations looks like. So usually they're kind of fenced in a little bit, and then they've got a little maintenance shack and a couple pipes that stick out of the ground. But overall, they're quiet, they're pretty low-impact, they're just a utility that's just needed for a few different areas, and it's just not permitted in the CS2-zone just yet.
Thank you, Jacob. Does anyone have any questions for Jacob?
No.
Seeing none, is the applicant here? If you just want to come to the podium and just state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Melissa Tisdavich and I'm an engineer at Enbridge Gas.
Hi.
Hello.
Did you want to add anything to Jacob's?
I think Jacob did a great job of explaining what a regulator station is and does. It basically takes high-pressure gas, and inside that, what here for does a maintenance shack is actually where the gas is transferred from high-pressure to low-pressure. So within those buildings that are on those sites, that's where that mechanism is, where the equipment is. So they do maintain that equipment, but that is where that sort of change happens. Yeah, they're really safe, they're in a lot of neighborhoods I have nearby, my local park. It's just, just a building and pipe that's out of the ground.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
How much area is required?
How much are we required?
Yeah, your fence area, I mean, I've seen them varying in different sizes. For proposing, what is the square footage of the ground that you need?
So the square footage that, so we first start with buying a parcel of property, and we tend to design our gas regulator stations to fit within that, those means. It depends on the size of the station. If we have a, what we call three-by-three station, depending on the regulator size, those we aim for a 100-by-100-foot parcel. If it's a two-by-two, which this one is a two-by-two, we aim for less than that. And we have different kinds of design parameters that we, we have in our standard practices. We need some, it needs to be 10 feet away from the fence, and then we need that above ground piping, a certain footage away from the building. So we will design it to the parcel that we have. But then, when we have a large parcel, we'd like to do it into a square, but when we're not, the parcel that we're looking at is not a square, so we'll have to make a few changes just to fit within that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. And this is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open it up to the public. Seeing none, I will close it to the public and I'll bring it up to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
I move the Planning Commission-
Well, just, just really quick, I just want to make sure. So in the, the notice, it says Questar Gas Company, and she said Enbridge Gas Company. Is that going to be, do we need to make any changes there?
Is Enbridge due business to ask Questar Gas?
Okay. Okay, so there's no issues. Okay, just wanted to check that.
Good.
I move the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for request of Kevin Mulvey for the proposed amendment, City Code, Section 10-11D-2-C, permitted uses by adding use 4824 gas pressure control stations to the list of permitted uses in the commercial sales two-zone and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report.
All second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Nelson and a second by Commissioner Martineau. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two on tonight's agenda, I'm just going to read the good part this time. Public hearing to consider the request of Brian Fruit to amend City Code, Section 10-11F-2-D, permitted principal uses in the general commercial CG-zone to add use 3424 metal working machinery and equipment to the list of permitted uses within the zone. Jacob?
Alrighty, thank you. So the second item that we have for tonight is also a request to add a specific use to a commercial zone. Now this one is to add use 3424 metal working machinery and equipment to the general commercial zone. So let's start off by looking at all of the areas zoned general commercial. So we've got a couple places up here on State Street. This one's kind of the largest portion right here, and then we've got a couple other small portions out over here, a little bit off of State Street and Main Street. Now, this particular area, right here, where we've got the majority of the general commercial zone, now this area used to be in the manufacturing zone a long time ago, and then it got rezoned into the general commercial. And then now the future land use map in the general plan designates a lot of this portion as being in the downtown village zone, which provides further insight into what direction that the city is anticipating as this area is further developed. But in short, the city has a limited amount of land zoned as general commercial, which will likely be reduced even further as development continues within the area between State Street and the railroad tracks. With that being said, let's go to the land use code numbers and take a look at what this use entails. Let me zoom in a little bit here. So use 3420 is machinery, 3424 is metal working machinery and equipment. So this is a manufacturing-type use that includes tool and die shops, small machine shops, metal boring, brushing, cutting, drilling, milling, and so on. Now this type of use involves anything from a drill press and a block of metal to a small enclosed CNC machine to a whole production and assembly line with large noisy machines typically used in heavy manufacturing areas. Now the applicant originally submitted their request because they have a potential tenant that would utilize CNC machines to manufacture small, highly specialized valving for suspension, primarily for dirt bikes. But the tenant would also be able to machine valves for side-by-sides and other automobiles or kind of whatever's needed for them. This is kind of what that looks like. So they're pretty small, and the applicant states that the CNC machines would be smaller machines that are not completely encased, or sorry, that are completely encased and produce little enough noise to where ear protection is not necessary, about as loud as like an overhead furnace. The tenant would receive deliveries once a month in the form of one-inch aluminum bar stock machine. They would machine the stock down into individual parts, assemble the parts together to create the specialized valve, and then distribute the finished part to installers in other locations across the country, including to other locations where parts can be anodized or colored or things like that. Shipments for these deliveries would be small enough for standard postal services such as USPS to handle. Now the building where the tenant would go in is approximately 4,700 square feet with about 3,000 square feet of usable space for machining equipment like the CNC machines. Two employees would begin at the location with the potential to increase to four, maybe six employees later. The proposed use would primarily consist of the manufacturing of the specialized valves and online sales that would provide sales tax. Now while no showroom or storefront is considered at this point, the applicant would be willing to add a showroom for customers if direct sales are necessary. 400 amps of 208 power are provided to the building each hour. However, the proposed use is capable of operating on 200 amps per hour. So now that we know what the applicant is requesting, staff's recommendation stems from two points. First, the proposed use is manufacturing in nature and does not meet the purposes of the general commercial zone. And second, the proposed use does not limit the scale of manufacture, which could allow for a more intense business into the zone that is not compatible with other permitted uses or with surrounding properties. So to the first point, the proposed use is manufacturing in nature and does not meet the purposes of the general commercial zone. So the purpose of the general commercial zone, we'll kind of go here. It states that the use is characteristic of this zone, and actually, it's right down here, this part that I wanted to emphasize for the most part. The use is characteristic of this zone will be a wide range of retail stores, shops, services, and offices. This zone may be applied to areas which have existing offices, heavy commercial, and institutional uses. It is the intent that the general commercial zone contain a mixture of compatible uses. Now, the International Zoning Code, let me actually pull this up real quick. Go to chapter two on their definitions. Now, the International Zoning Code provides definitions for light and heavy commercial uses. So we'll kind of go to these sections right here. Hopefully you can see this well enough. There we go. So we've got light and heavy. I can't really highlight those, but that's okay. So heavy commercial, an establishment or business that generally uses open sales yards, outside equipment storage, or outside activities that generate noise or other impacts considered incompatible with less intense uses. Typical businesses in this definition are lumberyards, construction specialty services, heavy equipment suppliers, or building contractors. I think another good example of this would be like auto sales or service or something like that, because those ones usually bring in a lot of traffic or have noise or things like that. For light commercial, an establishment or business that generally has retail or wholesale offices, sorry, wholesale sales, office uses, or services which do not generate noise or other impacts considered incompatible with less intense uses. Typical businesses in this definition are retail stores, offices, catering services, or restaurants. Something that's pretty nice is the International Zoning Code also provides a definition for light manufacturing uses. So if I come down here, manufacturing, we've got heavy, light, and medium, but we're, we'll just talk about light for right now. Light manufacturing is the manufacturing, compounding, processing, assembling, packaging, or testing of goods or equipment, including research activities conducted entirely within an enclosed structure with no outside storage, serviced by a modest volume of trucks or vans, and imposing a negligible impact on the surrounding environment by noise, vibration, smoke, dust, or pollutants. So Pleasant Grove has four different commercial zones that are not located within the Grove Zone or the Downtown Village Zone. So we've got the neighborhood commercial zone, we have the commercial sales, commercial sales two, and then the general commercial zone. Now uses in the neighborhood commercial zone are generally low in intensity and include many small retail or restaurant uses that would be compatible adjacent to residential uses. The commercial sales zone permits additional commercial uses beyond what would typically be permitted in the neighborhood commercial zone. And similarly, the CS2 and the general commercial zones permit even further intense commercial uses. And in fact, the general commercial zone allows for some heavy commercial uses such as car sales and service, like we talked about, animal hospital services, or even warehousing as a conditional use permit. However, the proposed use is light manufacturing in nature, because they're actually manufacturing the product. And the purpose of the general commercial sales zone, sorry, the general commercial zone does not intend for the incorporation of such types of uses. Such uses are typically a better fit for other manufacturing zones such as the Business Manufacturing Park or the Manufacturing Distribution Zones whose purposes are specifically to permit manufacturing uses. And of course, there has been an increase in demand for flex space in other manufacturing areas. And the areas that are currently zoned for manufacturing are nearly built out. In fact, some of the demand for flex space has led to developers proposing to create flex space buildings outside of the already established manufacturing zones, such as in the general commercial zone, the Grove Interchange Subdistrict, or the Grove Mixed Housing Subdistrict. And once these buildings have been built, then tenants oftentimes are not aware of the limitations of the permitted uses within the commercial zones, which eventually becomes an issue for the property owners of the flex space buildings. Overall, there is an opportunity for the city to consider amending the purposes of some commercial zones in response to the demand for light manufacturing uses, especially if such uses would not have an impact on surrounding properties and considering the amount of land left over for manufacturing uses. However, the city has already established what the vision of the city's future is through the general plan, which does not include the expansion of manufacturing areas or uses at this time. And then to the second point, the proposed use does not limit the scale of manufacture. Now the applicant has mentioned that certain qualifying provisions would be acceptable to tie to the proposed use as long as the proposed use is approved. Some of those qualifying provisions may include limiting the square footage or amperage of the proposed use to limit the possibility of larger-scale production and machinery. But overall, that staff's recommendation is one of denial because it doesn't meet the current purposes of the general commercial zone. And I can take any questions.
Any questions for Jacob? Thank you so much, Jacob.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here? You're welcome to come to the podium if you just want to state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Brian Fruit. I'm the owner of Timpanoga Cyclopes. We built that complex and opened that store in 1996, before that area was really viable to do that with. So basically, what we're looking at are some enclosed. So if I back up a little bit, you know, the national government is pushing for the United States to make stuff here and not import it from other countries. And they're putting massive tariffs in place for anybody that wants to import, whether it be China, or Taiwan, or Myanmar, or wherever it may be. So this gentleman would like to be able to make these parts in the United States. They're enclosed, super-clean CNC machines. If you go look at the different buildings we have, we're very clean in what we do with all of our buildings and how we maintain it. There'll be nothing outside of the building, but there would be these metal boxes, and you put a piece of metal in there and it spits out a part, and then you would take that and anodize it somewhere else and then bring it back and assemble it. So it's actually quite a clean operation, because we don't want, obviously, to have anything messy in our building. So we met with the city on this. This is the process that we were told to go through. And so we're trying to see if this is going to be a possibility.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Thank you so much. And this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. And seeing none, I will close it to the public and I'll bring it up to the commissioners for discussion or a motion.
It's, it's the same thing that we've heard several times, that very specific use might not be terribly, you know, difficult to put in that space, but if you open up for the entire purpose that allows, it gives, it opens up a door that's a lot bigger than just what was being proposed to manufacturers. We need to think about the entire code and not just, you know, that simple valve.
Well, it goes to the conversation that we had last time about amperage and stuff, or was it two times ago, right? And so, you know, that is one of the, the things that is, you know, mentioned in the staff notes that we can take into consideration. You're right, Jim, as far as the entire zone and the effect that it has there.
Well, and looking at our general plan, it just doesn't really fit with that general plan either. As we're trying to make this city, we're trying to develop our downtown, we're trying to get more of a, keep a hometown feel, but still grow. I know we spent a lot of time on that general plan and I don't like to see that lost.
Oh, no, not at all. And that's, that is a struggle.
I, I don't want to invite other manufacturing into that area. Which if we change the use, is effectively what we'll be doing.
True. That is true.
Well, and like I said, metalwork is just so broad. I deal with that every day in my, my career, and there is so much involved in that, that it worries me to open it up to that, that entire use.
I'm sure this applicant and what he's doing would be nice and clean, but that's, it opens up the whole zone.
We'll go back, can you go back to the zone map?
As you say, I'd like to see a closer view of the map.
You guys want to see an aerial view of the property as well?
Yes, please. Because if it's the CG-zone, then we're dealing with the area that borders State Street on either side, east and west, between the railroad tracks and pretty much-
And State Street.
Just to the west of it is, is quite a bit of what I would call light industrial.
Down into the manufacturing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll help you.
Seventh, or is that second, 220 south?
Okay, so I'm going to show you a little bit. Is that okay if I jump on and just show you a little bit about the map, Madam Chair? Okay, so this is the CG-zone. The property that the applicant is talking about is the one right here. Actually, it's the ones in the back. These used to be in the manufacturing zone long ago, yeah? So that's, I think, you explained that, correct? Did you explain that? Yeah, it used to be in the manufacturing. So the buildings facing State Street, they, of course, they changed a lot. Actually, all these buildings are kind of like semi-new. When you guys drive there, you guys can see some of the new buildings. I think where the applicant is, is trying to, to run the business is in the property right here. However, I'm going to do an aerial view, but this is, so he's bound, he has boundaries with the manufacturing zone in the back, okay?
That's where I was going to get, so he, he borders the manufacturing.
Yeah, and I'm going to do this really quick, so you guys can take a look at it. Let me see, give me a second.
And there's no residential in there remotely?
No.
Not that building, but we're not talking about that building.
So, yeah, so this is the, this,
That's manufacturing.
This is the manufacturing one right here.
Mm-hmm.
It's a super, yeah, old development. And the cyclops is right here. Is that, is that correct, is that what the cyclop, yeah, right here? And the buildings are right here. If you guys can see the, I, we understand how, actually, we can take a look at right here. So we're going to go on State Street, and we can see that, that this is the cyclop and it's facing the, I mean, by now, I'm pretty sure it's a landmark in Pleasant Grove City, I see it every day, right there, so. And then there's an entrance, and it's on those buildings right here in the back. These concrete block buildings right here.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, that's where the, that's where the business. I, I understand that we're talking about a, for the entire zone, adding a manufacturing use in the entire zone. And, sorry. Is it this one?
It's light manufacturing.
Right here. So, as you guys can see, that the, when we change the zone, we just use this property line right here as the, as the sound, as the zone boundary. But yeah, it's these buildings right here in the back. And this is the street view of the buildings.
Normally we're talking about the light blue, when you go back to the last-
Yeah, it goes, it goes on either side of State Street.
Yeah.
And it's-
Yeah, there's a couple of car dealerships and-
Right here.
Tire shop and all that, they're right there.
Right along here.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys have lasers?
Can you pan out a little bit, just a little bit? I want to see kind of where that. So it's just that, that section that you're on the cursor on, that's what we're talking about.
Yep, it's all of that right there.
And, and the, the green to the, right there, what is that zone?
Downtown Village.
That's downtown village.
And we've had conversations about this section right here in the past, how, you know, with the current tenants and current things there, and the way that the city, and, you know, going back to what Jim said about the, the general plan, you know, that is an entree or entry into the downtown village. We want that to be, you know, nice and pristine and, you know, whatnot. And so the concern is, obviously, that doing manufacturing on this side, right next to the manufacturing zone, right behind it, includes this side.
This is all manufacturing as well, everything around there.
It includes this side as well. And this, this right here is the biggest hiccup, in my opinion. It's this entire side right here. That's the biggest hiccup with the, with the, with the general plan, just as what staff has recommended. But, but doing limitations, does that, I mean-
Well, and that manufacturing zone that is behind this long, how long is that going to stay manufacturing, though? I mean, it's historically been that way for, or, I mean, I've been here for twenty, twenty-plus years.
That stuff, when you showed the map, that stuff was built fifty years ago plus. I mean, it's been there forever.
Yeah.
Practically speaking.
But with the, with the change in the railroad and, and some of those things, I don't know how long that, I don't know, it's, it's a unique spot right there.
What else would you do with it? I mean, would you tear it down and put houses? I mean-
Well, you got houses right next to it. I mean, instead of manufacturing, you go back just to the commercials.
Yeah, it currently can't, it currently cannot be housing, but the developer could come in and make the requests.
It's just interesting to see that one little sliver that's just still survived, that's-
It's kind of a holdover, is all.
Well, look at all the overlays. I love the overlays. They're phenomenal.
So what we're deciding today, though, right? Are we going to allow this use in, in this zone?
Yeah, and that, and that is a struggle. And again, it's, it's also a struggle. Jacob, correct me, like, there is the potential for sales tax revenue. Jacob, correct me, like, there is the potential for sales tax revenue.
Yes.
Okay, so, with, with most, with a lot of the other stuff that's in that area, we're not getting much sales tax.
Probably not, yeah.
We are.
But aren't you talk, I mean, looking, the CG here, in here, and then up here too, so more than just that gray area.
It's just this right here and that. The CG.
There is more.
There is one up in there.
Is there right up there?
Yeah, so I'll zoom in to the other sections.
So the CG here.
We've got one right here. These are just some, like, regular office buildings.
Yeah, with the worst entrance ever in the history of city planning.
I don't think I even know how to get there. I mean, you drive by it every day, but I don't know how to get there.
I know.
This area right here was rezoned to general commercial.
And we did that.
Couple of years ago.
We did that.
Yes, and so this one wants to do flex space there. And then we have this little portion right here, I think this one might be just like leftover, because that doesn't really include anything. But then we have a small section down here on Main Street, right here, a little complex right there, and then we have another small complex just right over here off of State Street that is also general.
And most, most of those are just professional offices that don't provide any sales tax.
And most of that's all built out, too.
Exactly.
So I'm just going to say this laid out. I want this to happen for him.
Property owner.
Right? So assuming that's the goal, and for me, I'll speak for myself, what other solutions are there? If we don't like the idea potentially of, of allowing this, let's lay out the other possible solutions and just kind of pro and con them, weigh them against each other.
I think there's two. I think there's a conditional use permit.
Like we did, like we did with the last, last one recently.
And then I think there's a rezone of his property.
And I think the rezone, maybe to Jim's comment, is, you know, if that other manufacturing doesn't stay of manufacturing forever, that's, that complicates that even more.
So there is other, other things that he can do to accomplish this without changing the use of the entire zone?
Yeah, that, that's my point, is what are our other options? And I think the, the conditional use permit with restrictions and, and things is a pretty viable option that doesn't affect the entire zone, we're not, don't even have to worry about everything that's, you know, all the other little pockets and holes or whatever, that still allows him to do what I personally want him to be able to do.
You know, the, the irony is that this is tucked back at the very back of this property, yet we have to be concerned about the stuff that's right up against the road, right? About how many developers are going to be doing that manufacturing right up against the road?
Yeah.
In today's society?
Yeah.
Honestly.
That real estate is too expensive to do that.
Yeah, I mean, Wastat Ornamental used to have a big shop right there on State Street and they've solely pulled out and then they had a place over on Geneva and they just closed that and turned that over to going into different buildings, so that.
Market drives.
Use is pulling away from us.
Well, and it's interesting that this is, this is instigated because of federal government regulations and stuff. And if that goes away, right, is this going to be something that will be thrown overseas again? Will this use be required?
Because, because.
Or wanted?
The, the price will become so much cheaper overseas.
So, like, we're dealing, we're dealing potentially with something that's a, what, four-year thing?
Potential.
Potentially. You know, hopefully, you know, it's, it's really lucrative for him and he's able to make a lot of money off of it and keep manufacturing here, but reality.
Chair, can, am I allowed one comment?
Yes, please.
I think that in the staff report, there's, I, I want to avoid a conditional use permit, okay? Conditional use permit is, they're complicated because unless we come out with the conditions, then we don't, we don't know what conditions we're going to implement in the future. It'll be just kicking the can front of us. So what I suggest to do, if that's a viable option, is a permitted use with qualifying provisions. And I think in your staff report, you guys can find some qualifying provisions. The applicant is here, so it's good that we can, you guys can have that discussion. If that's a route that you, you guys vote or feel that that's where to go, I think there's, there's, there's some qualifying provisions right there. The idea of the rezone, it would be extending the manufacturing zone into, into that area, correct? As I was talking to the applicant, Bernie, he, he won't delay his project more than two weeks. So the idea of a rezone, yeah, for two weeks.
Just that lot.
Yeah, just that lot. That's, that's the other option, or, I mean, you guys have multiple, I'm just giving you tools for you guys to make decisions or to make. But I will recommend we stay away from a conditional use permit.
If we can limit it to a lot, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Say that again.
If we can limit it to that lot, I like that idea. That would be ideal.
The, the rezone, you're saying a rezone to that lot?
Mm-hmm.
I'm okay with that, too.
I'm okay with rezoning that lot.
Especially because it borders right there.
Especially if it's only a two-week delay and I.
Also, bring the applicants, because their reason will be a different application.
It's up to you.
We'll re-notice it. Fortunately, fortunately, it's, it's going to be a two-week difference based on the calendar, so he doesn't have to wait a month. It's a two-week, a two-week extra waiting.
Is there another, are we having a second meeting this year or this month?
No, no, but you guys have one meeting in January and then the city council meeting, the city council meeting.
Right after.
Will be on the sixth and on the twentieth. So instead of going on the sixth, we'll go on the twentieth, because we have a planning commission on the eighth.
Okay.
Alicia, can we have him come up again and see if he's okay with that?
I think it's a good idea.
Brian, would you mind coming to the podium, please?
I go to the principal's office.
Are you okay with?
Sorry, the, the only problem is that it will be a different application, the rezone.
Sure.
And the general plan does not support the rezone. That's, I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that one, because then you will be facing that, that canidrum at that time.
General plan doesn't accommodate this either, so.
So when President Trump came in, he raised the tariffs dramatically, so it's been ten years now that we've seen these dramatic tariffs, whether it's the Republican or Democratic, they're not changing. So Biden's been taking in tariffs, but.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's.
Well, that was, that was just, you know, throwing it out there for everything else, but, but like what we had talked about, like, what we're trying to, you know, accommodate and stuff, the two-week delay, right, to make it so that that property can be rezoned, that parcel can be rezoned for the manufacturing, what are your thoughts about that?
So, a couple of things. One, that building is actually condos and I own half of it and it's a deal so it's better.
Okay.
So I would need to find him and see if that would be okay. I don't know that you're going to want to.
You can't split a building.
No, no.
So I don't know if that would work, but I don't know that, would there be any restrictions for him to continue using it as?
It would only add usability or different, yeah, it would broaden.
Expand.
Yeah, expanding the usability.
It would just give him the opportunity to do the same type of thing in his site. Yes, it wouldn't restrict anything that he's already got.
Daniel's uneasy though, what, go ahead.
If, if you guys want the opinion of a staff, of the director, I can tell you, the best route would be permitted use with qualifying provisions, because then you guys will have to find reasons why you guys want to go against your general plan. I mean, that's a situation that you guys feel like it, that's, that's, that's up to you guys, just trying to make it easier on you guys.
Okay.
And I don't want to, you know, man, that created this is quite spectacular. He's like a small machine, he created another large company, will be in this building, but he has over three hundred high-paying jobs he's created here in Utah, making small parts in a different industry. To be honest, I think he's kind of lost interest in that because it's too big now, wants to go be creative in something small. And the parts are expensive, I think they're like a thousand or a thousand dollars or two of them. So he'll sell a lot of those, which should be a nice sales tax item as well. He'll be clean, minimal employees, he can use this and.
We're for, we're for the idea. I don't think, yeah, I don't think you have to, I don't think you have to sell us on the idea. Can I ask Daniel just one more question? If we do this conditional or provisions.
Provisional, yeah.
Can we continue this until the next meeting so that those provisions can be put in by staff?
Yeah, yeah, you will delay him two, two weeks as well.
Yeah.
Two weeks as well, yeah, correct, you will delay him two weeks.
But then we're not changing the zone, going against the general plan.
Yes.
We're finding a solution for the applicant to do what he needs to do without impacting the entire zone.
Yeah, making it so that it's. I, I think the question is, how detrimental is that two-week delay going to be to you and your client?
It's expensive, but the building's currently vacant and wasn't.
But, sorry, I thought we'd be able to pull this together, so I told the current tenant to vacate and so they have now vacated. So if this doesn't work, honestly, I'd prefer to fail fast or to get approval, because then I can go find a different tenant if need be, but.
Well, I think we're, we're looking for a solution to make it happen, it's just delaying the process by two weeks. So the cost is just a delay, whatever that cost is to you for delaying two weeks.
Because, because the next meeting would be for city council is January sixth.
Okay.
We don't meet until January eighth, right? And so then city council would meet January twentieth.
Okay.
So it's that delay right there.
Yeah, but it's, it's either we do it this way or.
Yeah.
It doesn't get done, so.
Okay.
Daniel.
The qualifying provisions that, that we're proposing as a staff, maybe, so it's for you guys' consideration, Madam Chair.
For right now?
I think he said they're in there.
Because they're in the staff, right now would be to have a storefront, that's number one.
Okay.
And, and number two is to limit the square footage of it. So we will propose to, to make sure that, that it has a storefront and that the maximum square footage area used for the manufacturing portion is not bigger than five thousand square feet.
And are you okay with that as well?
Yes, yes.
Oh, and there's a third one, what's the third one?
Third one would be to limit the amperage.
To what?
The amperage.
Amperage.
Sound.
Yeah.
The power.
Yeah, right now, it's currently running four hundred amps of two oh eight, and you want to limit it to two hundred amps, is that what you're saying?
To whatever seems reasonable to maintain small CNC machines, because this will be a use that goes through the whole general commercial zone. So whatever we feel comfortable limiting it to.
So our building is currently set up with four hundred amps.
Is that?
And it is active.
Three-phase power?
Yeah, three-phase, two oh eight, and it's active Congress to try to get more power. It's not an easy thing.
No, it's not.
But when we built that, we decided to put four hundred amps in there, but.
You're suggesting to reduce that, though.
Maybe we can just go with smaller square footage. What if we went to like three thousand square foot of shop space?
Is that enough to do what you want to do?
Well, there's only like thirty-five hundred available.
So five hundred would be your storefront and three thousand could be the.
Well, five hundred's going to be probably the, you know, you have to have a work area just to ship in and out and, like, the machines themselves will probably only take up a couple thousand square feet.
But, but we, I request that you have a storefront, is that?
Totally great.
Yeah.
I think we can make a beautiful storefront.
So it says, so in the staff report, it says right here, three thousand square feet of usable space for machining equipment, is that correct?
That'd be great.
Okay, and then.
Maximum, we'll make sure that we say max.
And that's what it says, yeah.
The, the space is going to be about thirty-five hundred, but again, there's, there's.
Yeah.
Area that you have to, like, have work tables and stuff.
Bathroom in there, too, and a storefront, so.
So if we have, if we have the provisional that's listed right here, three thousand.
So can I bring this back up to just us?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Let me make sure I understand on the square footage. So the building is four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five total square feet. There's about twelve hundred square feet of, of retail office in the front, that's your bathrooms and the, what could be a showroom, and then offices up on the top.
Thirty-four.
So that leaves about thirty-five, thirty-six hundred in the warehouse, but not all of that needs to be for the machining.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to bring it back up to the commissioners.
So how do we feel about that? Do we, do we feel like that's a good solution?
I think so. That clears up a lot, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm.
Yeah, I'm good.
I'd say thirty-five hundred feet, leave, leave the amps, you know, don't, don't mess with the amp restriction since they've already got it, but just limit the square footage to the thirty-five hundred square feet.
Do you want to make a?
And storefront.
And a storefront.
And, and a storefront, you know.
And with that, that would stop anybody else that is the concerns that I see on my side, so I'm agreeing.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
I'm in agreement.
And Commissioner Phillips, just in regards to the amperage, I just wanted to bring that up in consideration for anywhere else in the zone that this use could go, because while they have, you know, a small enough amperage where we might feel comfortable with it, if someone else comes in with, like, say, a new building and gets more amperage or something like.
I think the size of the restriction.
Well, if, if we keep it at four hundred, I think you're okay.
Yeah, that's what I say, is if thirty-five hundred square feet allocated or dedicated to the manufacturing use, you're not going to be able to put such big machines in there to do such a big operation in thirty-five hundred square feet, so.
You're limited.
Yeah, by size.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd put the four hundred amps in there, too, just to.
Oh, you'd, okay.
I would. Go ahead.
I don't have a written thing, so. Now I got to hold it far enough away. So where's your proposal? I move the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the request of Brian Fruit for the proposed amendment to city code section ten dash eleven F dash two dash D permitted uses by adding use three four two four metalworking machinery and equipment to the list of permitted uses in the general commercial zone in adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report and is modified by the conditions below, which are. The building itself is approximately forty-seven hundred square feet with, I'll say, thirty-five hundred square feet of usable space for machining equipment. Two employees would begin at the location, to increase to four later. Proposed use would probably consist of manufacturing.
Sorry, can I?
We don't need all that, do we?
No, because this is, is, this is for the whole zone, so I think it's the.
Thirty-five hundred square feet.
Storefront.
Storefront and four hundred amps of two hundred and eight power are provided to the building.
I'll second.
Just to, just to be clear, just to be clear for, because I'm not sure, the condition number one is that the maximum area used.
For the manufacturing.
Square footage for the manufacturing part is thirty-five hundred. Condition number two is that there has to be a storefront dish, and condition number three is that the amperage is limited per, per building or per site? Per building?
Per unit.
Per unit. At, what was the number you guys came up with? Four hundred?
Four hundred.
Yeah? Just to, just to, just to help her out a little bit.
Thank you, Daniel, and thank you, Christina. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Phillips and a second by Commissioner Martino. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, going to number three on tonight's agenda. It's a public hearing to consider the request of Pleasant Grove City to amend section ten dash six dash two definitions, to revise the definition for building height. Jacob?
Madam Chairman, did we want to hear item number three first or did we want to hear item number four first? Is there a preference?[1743.12]
Oh, we moved them. So item number three, just kidding, is a public hearing to consider the request of Pleasant Grove City to amend section ten dash fifteen dash twenty-eight design review to amend the requirements of the design of new buildings, including residences. We're gonna hear one of them. You pick. I've announced both of them.
All right, perfect.
Awesome.
All right, so item number.
Just for purpose of the agenda, because we didn't change it at the beginning of the meeting, just let's follow the, let's just follow the regular one.
We're just gonna follow the regular one?
Yeah, because, uh, you know, at the beginning of the meeting, we didn't make the switch, so let's just follow like.
Well, we're, we read them both anyways, so item number three is building heights. All right.
Wait, wait, I'm not there yet.
All right, let me go back to right here. Okay, perfect. And I'm also gonna go ahead and hop on over to our definitions real quick. There you go. All right, so over the past year, as new houses have been constructed, several concerned neighbors to a few of these developments have reached out to staff regarding the permitted building height of these houses. And these citizens are primarily concerned with their protections to density, safety, light and air, and feel that some of these new houses are too tall and too imposing on their property. In several of these cases, there have been a few developments where the ground level has been raised for utilities and drainage, and then a residence has been placed on top of the raised ground. And because of this, the building appears to be much taller than what the neighboring properties have expected to be permitted, even though the building height meets code standards. So staff has reached different, sorry, staff has researched different ways to measure building height in response to these concerns and staff is open to finding a middle ground that gives extra security to existing homeowners while still letting new development build in a way that is fair. However, the, the potential solutions that staff has researched to redefine how the maximum height of a building is measured do not seem to provide any significant difference in building height, but we'll discuss all of that. So let's start off by going to how we currently measure the height of a building. So this is it right here, building height, the vertical distance measured from the average elevation. Actually, I'm, I'm not gonna do this one. I'm gonna go to here. This is a little bit better. Can you guys see that well enough? Let me know if I need to zoom in or anything like that. But this is, this is the first one. This is how we currently read it. Uh, the vertical distance measured from the average elevation of the finished lot grade at each face of the building to the highest point of the roof, provided that those structures set forth in section ten fifty-nine of this title shall be excluded from said measurement, which by the way, those exclusions include things such as like chimneys or spires or like architectural details or just nicks and nacks effectively. The height of a stepped or terraced building is the maximum height of any segment of the building. So in short, the way how we, um, currently read the code is we'll go to the midpoint of the house, which is right about here, and then we'll take the measurement up to where the peak of the roof would be. So like, we'll kind of draw a little horizontal line out. Um, another way that I tend to do it, which tends to be a little bit easier mathematically, is I'll just go from this corner all the way up to the peak of the roof and then from this corner all the way up to the peak of the roof, and then I'll get the average of those two and it comes out to be a certain number. In this particular case, about thirty-two feet. So that's how we do it for right now. Now, this current definition for building height is simple to understand. It's easy for staff to measure and is easy for developers to provide. However, this definition does not always satisfy neighbor concerns about the height of a building feeling too tall. The zoning ordinances have historically permitted homes to be built up to thirty-five feet tall, which from an outside perspective does not really seem to create any substantial impacts to light, air and space or the feel of a neighborhood, including situations where a two-story home is adjacent to a rambler. But at the same time, that's from an outside perspective. That's not from the person who actually lives there and has to deal with it every day. For significantly taller residences, uh, in July twenty twenty-four, a new provision was approved by the city council that permitted some houses to exceed thirty-five feet as long as the increased, or as long as increased setbacks have been provided. And this way, new houses on larger properties could have more flexibility in their design, but in a manner where adjacent property owners do not feel as if their property is being overshadowed. So to provide extra security to existing residents, staff proposes the following potential options to redefine building height. Uh, the overall goal of the proposed text amendment, if approved, is to find the best solution to ensure that the definition for building height is simple to understand, easy for staff to measure, is easy for developers to provide and satisfy neighbor concerns about the height of a building. So let's get into these options and we can kind of discuss things from there. Option number one, which is gonna be the average between the original grade and the finished grade. So starting off with the proposed text, the vertical distance measured from the average elevation between the natural grade and the proposed finished grade along each face of the building to a horizontal line extending from the highest point of the roof, provided that those structures set forth in section ten fifty-nine of this title shall be excluded from said measurement and the height of a stepped or terrace building is the maximum height of any segment of the building. Now, option one requires.
And that's, that's the one that, that we think will be the most appropriate to apply, the option number one, the to measure from the average. To take into consideration the original and the finished grade.
And that's the green.
Correct, that would be the green.
That would be the green, yeah. Yeah, so actually, you know, I'll go ahead and take this break really quick to explain this picture a little bit. So this red line is the natural grade. Um, so this was done, uh, when I went into the subdivision plans for this particular property. I got the grading that said, hey, this is what was there originally. And then I went into the building permit itself and got the finished grading plans. And that the finished grade is this blue line right here. So, uh, between the blue and the red, I have this green and this green is labeled as the average between the finished and the original grade, except that should say natural because we've got a definition for natural grade. We don't have a definition for original grade, so I'll have to change that, but, um, as we look at this though, blue is how we normally measure it from. So we just go from one point to the other and go up to like the peak effectively. On the red, we would do the same, um, and then the green is the halfway point effectively. If we go from the green all the way up to where thirty-five feet would be, it's only about a foot and a half difference between it and where we would currently measure the maximum height at thirty-five feet from the finished, uh, grade, if that makes sense. So, uh, I'll kind of get back into this and maybe more of this will kind of make sense. So option one requires developers to provide information about the natural grade of the property, so the red line, which may not always be readily available. Many improvements and grading work is performed shortly after a subdivision plot is recorded to ensure that the lots being sold are buildable. Uh, sometimes it may be some time or a different developer will come along without the information about the natural grade of the property. Uh, and furthermore, this option is a little bit more difficult for staff to measure, but it does provide a small difference in what the maximum height of the building would be. And so in this sample here on the screen, uh, with a change of elevation of about three feet between the natural grade and the finished grade right down here, right here at the midpoint of the building, it saves us about a foot and a half of difference uh, in terms of the maximum height the building can have. Whereas the perceived height of the building from the neighbor over here to the left is still gonna be about thirty-three feet. Here is another example. So at a difference in grade of about seven and a half feet from the natural grade to the finished grade up here, at the midpoint of the building, this house only saves approximately of two and a half feet of maximum height between the blue and the green. Again, the neighbor to the left in this case would have, would have a perceived height of the building at about thirty-six feet, which would extend beyond the maximum building height requirement that we have in residential zones. But you can see that between these two examples, the ground had to be built up significantly. On this example, the lowest elevation of the natural grade is about forty-seven feet and the highest elevation of the finished grade is fifty-nine feet. So when a neighbor like, say, puts up a fence on this back property line right here, if that, if that fence is six feet tall, then there's still two or three feet of ground that's visible over that fence. And then a house is put on top of that, and so the neighbor might feel that the house was deliberately built in a way that blocks their view of the mountain, even though the house meets all of the zoning requirements and engineering requirements. However, with this first option, instead of the maximum building height being all the way up to here, this blue line, it is reduced somewhat down to this green line. So it is reduced, but perhaps not as much as a neighbor might think. Option number two, average height from a set distance from the building. Now, this is taken from the international zoning code. So for the proposed text, the vertical distance measured from the lowest average elevation of the finished lot grade within the area between the building and a line ten feet from the building at each face of the building to a horizontal line extending from the highest point of the roof, uh, provided that these structures set forth in section ten fifty-nine, yada, yada, yada. So to note here, um, the set distance from the building could be amended. So right here, this, uh, blue line, once again, thirty-five feet from where we would normally measure the average from, puts, uh, it up to about right here. And if we go out from the house ten feet on both sides and then draw the line between those, and then if we go up to the maximum height it could go, uh, there's a little bit of a difference. That's about a foot and three inches or something like that, foot and a quarter. So it's not very much. But with this one, um, besides the current version of the building height definition, this option is the easiest for staff to measure and easy enough for developers to provide, as most building permits include some information about the finished grade slightly away from the foundation of the home. However, this option, like I said, results in the smallest difference in the maximum building height from the original definition. And then moving on to option number three, which is probably the weakest of the proposed text. So this one is the vertical distance measured from the lowest natural surface, uh, natural grade service, surface at any point on the perimeter of the building to the highest point of the coping of a flat roof or to the deck line of a matted roof or to a level midway between the level of the eaves to the highest point of gambrel riv roofs, uh, provided that those structures set forth in ten fifty-nine of this title shall be excluded from said measurement. Uh, for the purposes of measuring height, the level of the eaves means the highest level where the plane of the roof intersects the plane outside of the wall on any side containing an eve. So basically, it means going up halfway up the roof instead of to the peak of the roof. Because option three measures to the middle of the roof, it creates a situation where buildings could potentially be even taller than what is currently permitted. If this section is changed to measure to the peak of the roof, then it would be no different than measuring to the natural grade line, which would not be as flexible for developers to meet. Uh, so for example, this one, if we go from the lowest point of the natural grade right here and if we go up to the midline, this is only thirty feet and a half or something like that. If we were to go up to thirty-five feet, then the halfway point of the roof would be all the way up to here where the peak of the roof is. So technically, it makes it even easier for developers to have a taller house and I think that's kind of the opposite direction.
Keep in mind commissioners, that we're giving you options while we started, cause we started multiple ones. Some of them are really complicated to measure. It's gonna take us and it's gonna be difficult and it's, there's gonna be, uh, easy deviations from it. The number one is the one that we, we think is the, the most appropriate with it. But we're just showing you options in case you guys feel like the discussion is to be continued or the discussion is to be, uh, go deeper into one of these options, but option number one is the one that we're proposing to move on on, okay? But we're explaining what we did, the work that we did and the differences on, on those ways to measure.
And actually, with that being said, staff wants to open this proposed code text amendment up for discussion. So, uh, if there's any feedback, um, on if we should change any way, how we measure the building height, uh, and if so, what it should be changed to, uh, however, we can open it up for discussion.
I would say from my professional experience, number one is, is the best option to go with.
Number one, okay.
And that's, I've had to deal with that on commercial buildings before. Proposed grade, original grade, settling in between and, uh, overall height of the building and that's general commercial, that's what's accepted.
And also keep in mind that another option, technically speaking, is just leaving it as it currently is as well.
And that's not a bad option either.
And still, we're still part in the presentation. Let me see. Yeah, we're, we're looking for something that, sorry. A little bit of background that you didn't mention is until three years ago, three years ago, okay? The tallest you could do in Pleasant Grove was two and a half stories or thirty-five feet, whichever was less, whichever was more restrictive, okay? So you could have built, for example, a, a, a home that was thirty-five feet, but if it was three stories, it, it wouldn't be approved because it's only two and a half stories maximum, right? Or you could have do a two and a half stories, but it was forty feet, also wouldn't be approved because you, you know, it will be capped at thirty-five. It, it was complicated to, to also to make sure that we could do it quickly and, and, and and to find, and to make that decision. So just three years ago, in order to make it easier for, to, to, to build homes, we to interpret the code regarding the height, we eliminated the two and a half stories. So it, the code was more restrictive before. It was more restrictive before. We staff, we removed that restriction to make it thirty-five to make it easier. But it was more restrictive, just, just to keep in mind, because I don't want anybody to say like, well, you're making it super restrictive. We already made it easier. Now we're seeing some problems, we, because we're gonna have a lot of infield development as we're having right now and we, we're looking for the existing residents also while allowing for, for, um, uh, to still build a pretty big home. I mean, a two-story home is definitely below thirty-five feet. In all the examples that you saw right there, except on the one that measured from natural grade, which we're not proposing to, to, to approve, all the homes meet, meet the requirement, but it stops from getting the problem a little bigger. Does that make sense? Because for example, just in that home that you guys are seeing right there, the, the actual, the actual height was, um, let me see. The actual height for that home is the.
Well, it says the average is thirty-one nine.
Correct.
Was that the?
Thirty-one nine, that's the action.
Thirty-six two.
Thirty, thirty-one nine, okay? So that home was approved. That, that, let's take a look at that. Well, that home was approved and the height measured from staff was thirty-one nine. That's measured from finished grade, okay? If we do this code text amendment, then we'll cap it at the green line, okay? So the home is still, still meets the requirement, even though if you guys take a look at right there, there's a great difference of how many feet, eleven feet? I can't see.
Oh, yeah, there, yeah, it's forty-seven to fifty-eight.
Yeah, of eleven feet difference, okay? So even, even with a, with a, a feeling of eleven feet difference, this code is still allows for that home to be built in, but it stops it from being any bigger. And that's what we're trying to propose here, okay? So we're not saying, hey, we're gonna, with, what is built is not okay. We're saying it's still okay. You still feel, you guys can see that green line. That's actually a home built in Pleasant Grove City recently in a subdivision with a lot of feeling, eleven feet of feeling will still meet the code, but it will stop from building any bigger than that. And that's a massive home, by the way. Because on one side, just on one side, uh, it's thirty-six feet, okay?
Yeah, that right there, thirty-six two.
Yeah.
And so according to the green line, it could go up to what, thirty-eight, thirty-nine on the back side?
That side, because we still measure from the average.
Yeah, 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 most definitely.
With, with the old code, would that be considered a three-story because of walkout basement?
With the, with the older code, yes, but that code doesn't exist anymore. We eliminated it.
Just, just making sure I.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I wanna know the definition of half a story.
Yeah, that's why we eliminated it because it was complicated to, to come up with something like that. For example, from the, from the old code.
It's not a full stand-up.
From the old code, the one that does not exist anymore, that home wouldn't be permitted, wouldn't be permitted, okay? So I, I've, I have some developers and you're being too restrictive, not at all. We actually opened it up for, for, for them to be able to build because that would be considered a three-story home right there, okay? So that one wouldn't be permitted. We eliminated that part just to, to, to measure the, the straight distance from average to the peak. We also don't wanna measure to middle of the plate. We don't wanna measure anything like that, too. The peak is the easiest way and the most common way to measure, okay? That's, that's, I think we finished our presentation, uh, chair. So if you wanna continue with the process, we'll, we're ready for it. Unless you guys have questions for us.
Yeah, I think I, I think I'll, um, cause it's a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Not seeing any, I will close it to the public.
Yeah, they wanna come up.
Oh, you missed your chance. I've just closed it.
Time's up, time's up.
If you could just. If you could just state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Pratt, I'm an attorney with Curtin McConkey, 2600 West, Executive Parkway, Suite 400 in Lehigh. I'm here representing Castlewood Homes, and I believe their Sierra Height project is perhaps the catalyst for this whole discussion. And so, we, we have some concerns, although the staff is, is offered some encouraging information, so that it may be that the adoption of this change will not be as detrimental to us as we, we assumed when we first read what was being proposed. And so, the, in the final analysis, we're going to ask, if you'll permit it, that we meet with your staff, have them show us how this ordinance is to be applied, and we can determine what impact it will have on us. But I'll give you some background, I'll, I'll say this, we, we see the reason behind adopting this change prospectively. We think that adopting it to apply retroactively is not fair, and I'll tell you why that is. When, when my client first met with the city staff for the pre-development meetings, they were told that there were two possible alignments for the storm sewer, and for the, I'm sorry, the other, on drainage, sorry, both of which utilities are, are, are gravity-fed. And we were told one of them would be through Manila Park, which is south and downhill from our project, and would not have required a lot of fill. We were also told the other one was in, I believe, 1800 North, and that's north of the property uphill, and would require a lot of fill. And in the course of that conversation, staff let us know that they would not support the, the southern alignment of those utilities. And so, taking that clue from staff, we designed this project so that those utilities extended northward, and in the course of developing it, would require a great deal of fill. And, but you should know that that was done, obviously, that was not our preference, it was harder, and it was more expensive, but we were deferring to the city. And so, we sought our permits, including grading plans, and they were approved. And we, when we received the permits, we developed this project in accordance with permits that the city approved, so that that project now, as it stands, has been done in accordance with the city's recommendations, and in accordance with permits that the city issued. Now, our concern is that, because of the extensive fill we were compelled to bring, the application of this ordinance change would, it, it could have one of two effects. It could require us to build ramblers rather than two-story homes on our premium lots, and that's disruptive of our pro forma, of, of what we projected to make, and it subjects us to, to risk that what we hope we could develop as a nice, profitable community, both nice for the community and profitable for the developer, may no longer be possible. At the same time, we, especially with this option three that we looked at tonight, we have concerns we won't be able to do anything on two of the lots. Now, staff seems to think, and this is encouraging, that that's not the case, that perhaps we're misapplying what is intended by this ordinance, and that's possible, and, and that would be the best for all of us. And so, we request that we have the opportunity to speak with staff and understand whether retroactive application of this ordinance would still allow us to pull building permits for two-story homes on our remaining lots. If, if we're compelled to build ramblers, the nature of the whole subdivision changes, and, and, and I suspect you may be getting complaints about us from those who are already living in that subdivision because of it. We are, and so, what we're, we're, we're here to make two points, that the retroactive application of this is not fair, and we, we suggest that you make it prospective only. That will accomplish what staff has said is the purpose, which is to give the residents and the developer the opportunity to know what they have to do, in the case of the developer, what they have to do, in the case of the residents, what they can expect. And that's our first suggestion. And then our second request is that we be, we be allowed to meet with staff to, to quantify the impacts of this project, of this ordinance on our project. And, and if, in the worst case, it is as detrimental as we have initially concluded, then we would need to talk some more. At that point, we would like this to be applied, applied only prospectively, and not retroactively. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and my, my daughter, I could never tell her no, is also here to answer some of the more technical details. She is, she's the developer, and, and we've observed how open-minded you are, and how, how cooperative you are, and so, we offer to give you any information that might help you to consider what, what, what I've said tonight.
Thank you, Jim.
I can answer once you close the, the, the public comments.
All right. Any other public that wanna come up? Seeing none, I will close it to the public hearing, and I will bring it back up to the commissioners for a discussion or a motion. First, though, Daniel...
You would like me to answer to some of their concerns?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Well, I listen carefully, there are a couple terms that are used incorrectly, we're not, the, the term retroactive doesn't, nothing is being retroactive. Imagine every single code text amendment says that it will be retroactive, that's not the case, okay? The, the legal term when we, when we talk about land use is a vested, a vested project, okay? When a project is vested, is when you have, have submitted an application, and have gotten approval, or, sorry, you have submitted an application, you make the payment for the application, that means your project is vested, okay? No city code ordinance is retroactive, meaning that we're not apply any city code, and then go back to previous projects and say, "Hey, this home is already, you already submitted a building permit, we already, you already paid for it, then we're gonna apply this law to it." That's, that's not the case. The, the legal term is, at the time a project is vested, the law that gets applied is at the time that a paid application is being formally submitted, okay? So, just, just to be, be clear on that, on that situation.
And that's for the entire project, it's not just for one house, right?
Look, I mean, it, it depends on how this applies to. In this case, for example, we, nobody can grab a, a, a new ordinance, in this case, an ordinance is not for a subdivision, is not for grading, is not, is, is how we're gonna measure the height of a home.
It is individual house.
If, if I submit an application, we already have for a building permit, has already been submitted and paid for, okay, and that's the case for every single application, then it means it has vested rights. We cannot just go and change it because we changed the code. Does that make sense? Now, once the code is, is adopted, then we apply from there on to every single, uh, uh, submission, yeah?
So, Daniel, I think the difference in perspective, though, from this gentleman is, is he's looking at it from when they develop the, the subdivision, the horizontal development of it, not on an individual home basis. So, as a developer going through a project, there's quite a bit of investment that goes into a project, the development of it, and you're correct, an individual home, maybe Lot 12 or 22 hasn't been submitted, so, so it's not invested for that home, but there sure is a whole lot of water under the bridge before that individual home, you know, the 10th or the 12th or whatever in that development, that, that it's totally affecting from a retroactive standpoint.
Well, it's gonna affect the entire city.
For sure.
The entire city, any home from now on, it will be affecting any home from now on.
Once it's been approved.
Correct, well, once it's been approved, if it's approved, right?
Whatever's approved.
Whatever's approved, whatever, whatever code is adopted, is, is affects from now on.
But their project is halfway through, and so, it's affecting...
Yeah, but no project is approved, no project gets approved with the, with the height of a home.
Sure, no, I totally, totally agree, and I get it, but I think there's a disparagement between...
Sure, I just, I need to make sure that we understand this, the legal, the legal term from what we, what we submitted right here, regards what a vested project is versus a retroactive application of, of, of a city code. So, and, and I probably understand the differences, but I just need to make sure that we understand what the land use regulation or rule is for this, okay? So, no code is, is the, the, we, that we come for, and it's not targeted for a specific development, okay, especially in this case. Does it affect, yeah, it affects, would it affect it, probably, would it affect everybody else for sure, everybody else? So, it's not just, we, we didn't do this, this law just thinking of one specific subdivision, thinking how it is, okay? Actually, the first problem that we had regarding the height, I don't, I think you guys had it right here, the comment, it has nothing to do with this, with this, with this subdivision, okay? Just to be clear on that, and, yeah, they, any, any person can meet with staff at any time, doesn't mean that a staff will, just because they meet with us, we're gonna change what we have. This is a proposal that we're doing based, again, we have the right to submit something, to propose something, it's going through the legal process, the planning commission does, it's a legislative process, and it's following every single one of the steps, we're presenting a notice incorrectly, and it's going through the process, they're welcome to meet anytime with staff, but doesn't mean that we'll do any, any change, so we propose that we continue with the process as normal, the planning commission will do a recommendation only, and the final decision is done by the city council, okay? Probably this one, I'll bring it to the city council, the first, I'm thinking about the second, the second meeting in January, okay, the second meeting in January, but of course, the doors are wide open. I, actually, I received an email from the applicant, I was just out of the office, I was sick, came back today, and we'll, we'll make sure we meet with everybody who has concerns regarding this one, regarding this, this, this code text amendment. And, yeah, and just, I wanna reassure the planning commission that this is following the legal process of how a legislative decision is made, okay?
Thank you, Daniel. One thing that I like about the applicant's suggestion is to meet with the city. I'm not sure that it makes sense for us to make a decision subject to them meeting with the city.
No.
But I think it makes sense to perhaps postpone a decision subject to them making it, having that meeting to make sure that their points are clarified before a final decision is made, that, that's maybe just my thought.
Well, and we had considered continuing this item anyway, so I think that's what we do.
Yeah. So...
But just to be clear, I wanna make sure that we, we wanna continue, because I want to receive direction from, from, from the planning commission of the options that we presented, which one is the best one, that you guys consider the best one, and then we'll focus on that one, that's the reason for the continuation, at least from the staff.
I was way heavily on Jim's expertise, which you said was number one, but I think your experience and your knowledge in building, and I, I think makes a lot of sense.
Daniel, would you like us to go down the line of which option?
That'd be good, yeah, if you guys, that'd be, that'd be great. You guys, if you guys want us to present them again, show the differences, we'll do it, if you guys understood that, you just...
I think we're...
Pretty much what I'm trying to receive is, what staff is searching for is for direction on the, from the planning commission, on what of the options you guys consider the most agreeable.
Can, can you just go to number two really quick? Number one makes sense, and I like Jim's, you know, having Jim's expertise on that, it's good, as well as the ease.
Number two is the same, but instead of just measuring from, where the footings of, of the exterior footings of the houses, the exterior walls, we'll draw a line 10 feet on each side, and then measure from there.
Okay, that was number two.
Correct.
And that was, ugh, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, this is the way that the International Zoning Code does it.
Yeah, and then three?
Three is going from the lowest original ground surface.
Lowest natural, or original, okay, that's right. So, looking, looking at one, two, and three.
And four is leaving it the same.
And four is leaving it the same.
Okay, okay, four leaving it the same, so, you know, looking at, at each one of these, I mean, this, this, I know what houses is, I've driven past it, I, I recognize it, and, yeah, it is, you know, it is significant, especially from, you know, neighbors' perspective, but this seems to be, my opinion, you know, the easiest, and it does take into consideration, you know, it gives a lot of leniency, in, in my opinion.
So, can we do a...
That, I, yeah, I would say that's...
I'd actually recommend we go old-school style with Heads Up, Seven Up, just to make sure that nobody is, like, influenced or swayed by the other.
You need to remind me how that works.
But, but for the record, Commissioner...
Christina gets to see whose thumbs are up.
Yeah. Commissioner Nelson, which option would you recommend?
Option A.
One, option one?
Option one.
Commissioner Martino?
Option one.
Commissioner Redding here wants option one. Commissioner Patton?
Option one.
Commissioner Butler?
One.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Unanimous.
So, it's a unanimous for option one.
Okay.
But I still think Heads Up, Seven Up would have been way more fun.
It would have been way more fun, but hard for the minutes. And then I would entertain a, a motion.
To continue.
I...
What's our next date?
January 8th.
Can I get an official motion?
Yes.
Well, I'm, before we do that, I, I wanna move, I wanna prove it is where I am, so if someone else wants to not discuss that first.
Yeah, the only concern I have with it is, I, I think there's the risk of, of what they were describing, of maybe the interpretation of it, and how it would affect them before they're, like, fully on board. I, I think we're comfortable probably saying, "Hey, that's good," but I'd like to have their, their feedback, or their opportunity to meet with the, the city staff to discuss that. That's...
I agree.
That's the only reason I would say continue versus approving it, because I, I agree, I think we're all kind of on board, with, especially with unanimous vote, but I think there's value in letting them. And that's, and that's not a bad idea. I'm, I am curious, so, really quick, I am curious of staff, if it's okay if I ask them a quick question. So, in general, just looking at the city and all the, the development that's available and stuff, how, this is, this particular project that, you know, with this developer is unique, will this be an issue again with many projects, do you see?
For sure, for sure. I mean, when we do a public hearing, okay, we don't specifically, we, we don't, we don't target specific people, again, because if I have sent these notices to the people that have complained, you will have right here 100 people telling you, "Approve this right now," okay? So, it's, it's for everybody to see, for everybody to see, and it will, it, we, what we're trying to stop is to make a problem bigger, because if you look at that right there, just look at that home, I mean, that home is, is, it's okay, it's permitted, it's three-story home. I mean, if you leave behind that home, you'll be looking at three stories from there, but still meets the code, okay? But what we're trying to avoid is eventually, because we have 35 feet, because we eliminated two and a half, okay? If we, again, if we go, that would be going retroactive, saying, "No, that's not permitted," because, okay? But it's a massive home, still, it still is permitted.
Yeah.
Okay, still is permitted. However, the residents of Pleasant Grove City, many of them, that, that are not here today, but you guys have heard in previous meetings, they want us to do something regarding the elevations of homes, and they will claim that being, like, existing residents was being done for them. This is a, this is the trial of staff, trying to say like, "Okay, I understand there's original grade, I understand there's finished grade, let's find something in the middle, let's, let's find an average in the middle," okay? That's what we're trying to do. Would that affect some homes? For sure, I, I'm, I'm assuming, yeah, I mean, so far, it hasn't happened yet, okay? So far, it hasn't happened that we have a home that is... we have a home that is bigger than that, because right now, our code will allow to build to that blue line, okay? Nobody has done that yet, but it could happen tomorrow, it could happen tomorrow, we're trying to say, hey, staff provided something, we're showing what we think it should be, this is an effort to listen to the existing residents of Pleasant Grove, and at the same time, in the way, when we run our, when we run our numbers, and when we run our examples of existing homes, we realize that it does, of course, it's more restrictive, you can see that blue line and the gray line, but it still meets the ones, the permits that we have received, we're just trying to avoid a bigger problem.
I think to your question too...
Did I answer the question?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I think even to the applicant's point before, is any future project, kind of what you're asking about...
We are the applicant.
Well, no, well, okay, the public that commented, any future project will be doing their development based on whatever is passed here, so, will there be concerns potentially? Sure, but any future developer will be penciling out the viability of a project based on whatever we approve here, and so, they'll either, they just won't be caught in the middle of a project like this individual commenter might be, so I think that'll help solve the potential problems, they'll be able to see it from before the process starts.
Yeah, and if you guys take a look at that image, we're talking about eleven-foot difference, if I stand up, I'm six feet, so double me the size, that's extra feeling, and what we're restricting or going lower is two and a half feet, okay, but it's still an attempt to listen to the residents of Pleasant Grove City where we've gone, which I'm pretty sure you guys have listened to some of them in previous meetings as well.
Thank you, Daniel.
Next meeting is January eighth?
Yeah.
Okay, I remove the planning commission, continue the jury walker... Yeah, did they continue at the request of Pleasant Grove City for a code text amendment to Pleasant Grove City, to city code section ten-six, tax two, definitions to revise the definition of building height until our January eighth meeting, based on the findings that according to the commissioners, option number one provided by the staff is that what we will move forward, that it can be defined and written to that extent.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Martino and a second by Commissioner Butler, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you want me to restate this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, awesome, the next agenda item is a public hearing to consider the request of Pleasant Grove City to amend section ten-fifteen-eight-twenty-eight, design review, to amend the requirements of the design of new buildings, including residences, Jacob?
Thank you, thank you. Design review, okay, actually, I want to bring this up as well. Sure, how about that? That's fine. I'll kinda come down here. There we go, okay. Alrighty, so the last item that we have today is also gonna be more of a discussion piece, and then we will take your comment and make any changes to the proposed text if necessary, and we'll bring it back for further discussion. So, the intent of section ten-fifteen-twenty-eight is to protect and preserve the character of neighborhoods throughout Pleasant Grove City, which is pretty important, I feel like, but let's go into the purpose, so the purpose of this section is as follows, the city council and the planning commission, which advises this council on zoning matters, have determined that the various aspects of architectural design have significant impact on the character and value of city neighborhoods and business districts, and that preserving and enhancing this character requires the existence of a certain harmony and compatibility in these aspects from one building or dwelling to the next, and throughout the particular neighborhood or district. They've also determined that preserving and enhancing the visual character of certain entryways into the city, and areas of unique historical or architectural significance, furthers the economic and cultural well-being of the community. Additionally, the city finds that these same benefits should be extended to the entire city. The design standards outlined below address general design relationships and site planning principles, they are standards that could apply to any area of the city. So while staff understands the importance of maintaining protections to the design of existing neighborhoods, staff also finds that the zoning ordinances found within this section are sometimes unnecessary, subjective, and difficult to enforce. So, a common section of this code, let me scroll down just a little bit, that has created a little bit of friction in the past, is section ten-fifteen-twenty-eight B one, right here, which is to preserve the design character of the existing immediate area, to protect the visual pattern of the community, to protect the value of the surrounding properties, and to promote harmony in the visual relationships and transitions between new and older buildings, new buildings, including residences, should be made sympathetic to scale, form, size, and proportion of existing buildings. This can be done by repeating building lines and surface treatment, and requiring some uniformity of detail, scale, proportion, textures, materials, color, and building form. Now, the primary issue with this section of code is that it was intended to allow for some flexibility for staff to review building permits for residences, and ensure compatibility within their respective neighborhoods. However, this section of code has been used by some concerned citizens when a new building is built on an adjacent property that is, for example, taller than what they originally expected, and then when staff insists that the new building meets the maximum height requirements per the single-family and rural residential zone sections, the concerned individual sometimes uses this section of code to emphasize their concern. It's not staff's intent to undermine the public's concern, as they are the ones who ultimately have to live with the finished product, and staff echoes the need for neighborhoods to maintain the character that they have, in fact, it is that neighborhood character that makes it pleasant to live in any particular area. But instead of keeping this section of code separate from the zoning requirements in other zones, staff's recommendation is to remove section ten-fifteen-twenty-eight entirely. Instead of having a separate section that is difficult to interpret and harder to enforce, staff feels that it would be better to take specific points from this section that we like, define them better, and then include them in the zoning ordinances where they could be best utilized. So, for example, instead of referring to this section to ensure that new buildings are made sympathetic to scale, form, size, and proportion of existing buildings, we already have a requirement for all new buildings to meet certain lot coverage and building height requirements, so as long as those defined requirements are met, there should be no need to add further restriction to a building's scale or size. By defining sections of this code better, and then reinstating them in other sections where they could be easier and more relevant to find, zoning ordinances would be able to protect the city better, because we have something definitive instead of something subjective. So, let's go through these sections of code, and I'll provide some comments along the way. And you guys can kind of follow along in your staff reports, staff reports if you like, 'cause I'm just gonna go through the staff reports on page four and on. So, this first portion right now, starting with construction activity, so the planning commission will review different kinds of construction activity that need design approval, and each kind will need a slightly different application of the guidelines. For the construction of new buildings, including residences and parts of buildings, the focus is on the compatibility of new construction with the existing character, which is like style, size, et cetera, of the immediate area. For reconstruction, remodeling, addition, and repair of existing structures, this rehabilitation will be done in line with the original character of the structure. For relocation of buildings, those buildings moved to sites must be compatible with the surrounding buildings. For the demolition or removal of all parts, sorry, yeah, of all or parts of existing buildings, compatible replacement structures must be sought. For sign permits, the sign is to be designated, designed as an integral architectural element of the building and site to which it relates, and is compatible with the overall character of the area. So, staff's note on this whole section right here, staff does not have any real immediate concerns with this section, except perhaps that, you know, the planning commission approval may not be necessary, even then, if the proposed building meets code, then there may not be any issue with simply just removing this section entirely. Next up, for harmony of design, we talked about this one already, to preserve the design character of the existing immediate area, to protect the visual pattern of the community, to protect the value surrounding properties, and to promote harmony in the visual relationships and transitions between new and older buildings, new buildings, including residences, should be made sympathetic to scale, form, size, and proportion of existing buildings, and this can be done by repeating building lines and surface treatment, and by requiring some uniformity of detail, scale, proportion, textures, materials, color, and building form. So, staff's note on this one is, the issue with this section is that it's not well enough defined, the intent was to allow for some flexibility for staff to make a determination when reviewing building permits, however, it's turned into more of a hindrance, so, for example, we would have someone who would say, oh, this house looks really ugly, so I'm gonna complain, and that's more of like one of those subjective complaints, rather than using it as a tool to be used to protect neighborhood, neighboring properties, so, for an example of that one, is like, this house is clearly built in a way that is disruptive to the character of the neighborhood, and here's the proof for that, that shows that it takes away from the neighbor's protections of light or air, or lowers the value of surrounding properties, which, you know, that would be a little bit more definitive than, you know, anything like that, so...
Jacob?
Yes?
And the biggest one, the biggest concern is, that's, we propose to eliminate that one, because then, people come to us, residents come to us and say, hey, I built a Rambler, so now my next neighbor needs to build a Rambler, because he needs to match me, and it doesn't matter what the code says, I mean, it's in contradictory, it says thirty-five feet is the maximum, and say, well, no, right here, it says that it needs to meet my, what already exists, and that puts us into some hot water right there, so that's why we propose to completely, just completely eliminate that one. If some design standards are needed for residential, which is complicated and difficult, I mean, we already have some of those, then we'll come up with some other ones, but to have that, it's just, it's just aim for whoever doesn't like the neighbors being built to come say, this doesn't meet the requirement, however, even right now, we say, hey, the maximum height is thirty-five feet, and someone could say, well, I have a Rambler, I want a Rambler, because it needs to match what already exists, it's been a Rambler since the eighties, so now everything needs to be a Rambler, and that puts us in a tough situation right there.
And, I mean, honestly, if staff were to implement this section of code, when all other requirements from the rural residential or R1 zones have been met, such as the maximum height, it would open a path to further conflict, either by the developer or by the neighbor, so instead of having a section with the flexible interpretation for limiting the scale, form, size, and proportion of new buildings, these requirements should simply just be included in the respective zone, effectively, so. Moving on to two, the use of unusual shapes, color, and other characteristics that cause new buildings to call excessive attention to themselves and create a jarring disharmony shall be avoided or reserved for structures of broad public significance. So, this section has not really been an issue in the past, but requirements such as color are not always possible to enforce, people don't necessarily need a building permit to color their house. Staff interprets jarring disharmony as something more extreme, such as a traditional single-family home next to someone who uses a school building, or like an eighty-five-foot-tall castle, you know, for a home, or another example is like a double-wide trailer in the middle of like a gated community of like ten-million-dollar homes or something, you know, staff believes that most people would want to have a traditional home to live in rather than a school building, and would rather simply just trust people who want to build a home that is similar in character to other existing homes, and to create a friendly atmosphere with their neighbors. If there's a portion of this section that is important to preserve, one option could be to explore form-based codes, to further, to provide further definition in residential zones, so, for example, you know, if it looks like a house, then it's a house, if it looks like a school, then it's a school, kind of an idea, but ultimately, I don't even think that this section is really all that necessary. Three, four, five, and six, the heightened bulk of new buildings shall be related to the prevailing scale of development, to avoid overwhelming or dominating existing development. Building additions should be designed to reflect existing buildings in scale, materials and color, facade renovations should include as few different materials as possible. The architectural style of new or redeveloped structures shall be compatible with the predominant architectural themes of the district. Contemporary design for new buildings in old neighborhoods and additions to existing buildings or landscaping should not be discouraged if such design is compatible with the size, scale, color, material, and character of the neighborhood, building, or its environment. And adjacent buildings of different architectural styles shall be made compatible by such means as materials, rhythm, color, repetition of certain plant varieties, screens, sight breaks, et cetera. So, staff does not feel that these sections really need to be enforced, considering the housing shortage, if someone has the money to build a home, they should be able to build a home in the style that they choose. Little to no complaints are anticipated from the style of the home, I mean, like we can get Ramblers, we can get two-story houses, we can get farmhouse style, or modern, or traditional, or something like that, as long as there's not like a jarring disharmony. Now, if someone is able to purchase additional land and wants to build a garage or an addition to their home, as long as the proposed use is permitted, and the lot coverage setback and building height requirements are met, then staff has no issue with this section being removed, however, if this section is found to be pertinent, a new provision for perhaps like floor-area ratio may be implemented to dictate how much square footage may be used on a property, including height. Color is still difficult to enforce without making the zoning requirements too burdensome, so, anyways, there's that one. And I'll probably talk about jarring disharmony here in just a little bit, too, I think I've got a section for that. Number seven, the construction of additions to existing buildings should generally be, should be generally discouraged in yards adjoining public streets, and should instead be confined to side and rear yards, which are generally out of public view. This section, if it's important to keep, we can put this in, you know, respective residential zoning codes, I don't know how important this is, I think sometimes it gets a little bit burdensome, if someone has a house in, you know, the far corner on like, say, a corner lot or something like that, you know, it would limit them and their ability to have any additions, or accessory buildings, or anything like that, I don't know, it's something that we can probably discuss a little bit more if we feel like it's important or not. Number eight, to preserve the continuity prevailing along each block face, the orientation of the building's principal facade shall complement that of the majority of buildings in the same block, either parallel or perpendicular to the street, staff finds that this section could be better defined in section ten-six-two, definitions for front yard. Number nine, the open expanse of front lawns and quantities of planting within them of new or redeveloped structures shall be comparable to that of existing structures, so considering water shortages, staff finds that this section should not be necessary, and should allow property owners to maintain their landscaping as zerescaping, if so desired. The minimum setback requirements should still provide for similar amounts of landscaped area, and then the residential zones also provide for some minimum landscaping requirements at the time of construction as well, so. Projects shall be designed in context with their surroundings, this means that enough visual linkages between existing buildings and the proposed project shall be provided so as to create a cohesive overall effect. In addition to those noted above, visual linkages shall include window proportions, entryway placements, decorative elements, style, materials, and silhouettes. So, this section gives flexibility for staff to compare proposed buildings to the surrounding environment for compatibility, however, it's written in a way that encourages a lot of uniformity between houses, again, as long as there's no jarring disharmony between buildings, staff does not find this section necessary. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, access control, doors, shrubs, fences, gates, and other physical design elements should be used to discourage access to an area by all but its intended users, surveillance should be encouraged by placing windows in locations that allow intended users to see or be seen, while ensuring that intruders will be observed as well. Surveillance is enhanced by providing adequate lighting and landscaping that allow for unobstructed views. Territoriality should be augmented by the use of sidewalks, landscaping, porches, and other elements that establish the boundaries between public, semi-private, and private areas. So, regarding these sections, landscaping and lighting can be implemented in a way that encourages surveillance of the neighborhood, and in fact, this particular thing is called crime prevention through environmental design, however, enforcing these kinds of designs is difficult, because we don't require landscaping plans for residential areas, so, yeah. Number fourteen, projects should be designed with human scale foremost, this section does not really seem to add much value to the zoning ordinances, I think most people want to design for human scale, so. And then last one, to promote quality, design, stabilize, and improve... And then last one, to promote quality design, stabilize and improve property values, and create pleasing visual appearance, all buildings with metal exterior covering may be permitted by conditional use permit in commercial and industrial zones. Planning commission shall base its evaluation on the architectural treatment and appearance of the building facade when visible from any public street. So considering the advancements to metal siding as an exterior building material, staff finds that a conditional use permit for metal-clad buildings should not be necessary, especially in manufacturing zones. And even in the Grove Zone, we already have requirements when it comes to metal buildings, effectively, like they can only be an accent material, effectively, so just things to consider there. But that's it for me, Daniel, if you've got anything?
Yeah, so let me resume all of this and say that, condense this into say that this, this code, existing code, is redundant, goes against existing code that we have already, and it's easy to go to misinterpretation. The only thing that we say from there, and we're working on it, Commissioner Butler, is I'm working on new ordinance that can define what serescape is in good elements of serescape, okay? But other than that, the rest of the ordinance that Jacob read is, it's, again, redundant, impossible to apply, because again, for example, we don't require a landscape, a landscape plan for a single-family dwelling. And it's just counterproductive, no, counterproductive, no, usually, it, it goes against the code that I reaccessed. So we, we propose to eliminate all that, but we also working at Commissioner Butler, and this is something that I have very close to my heart right now, on a new ordinance regarding how we're gonna, what serescape really means, and good elements of serescape, okay? That's what we're proposing.
It all sounded really good to me. But this is a public hearing, so I'm just gonna hurry and open it up to the public. And not seeing any, I'm going to close it to the public, and I'm going to bring it up to the commissioners for discussion or motion.
Do we live in daybreak?
No.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Wow. So just for clarification from staff, just ideally you want us to look at this over, look at the staff notes and stuff like that, and just make comments and, and come back and say, we agree, consult, you know, consolidate it, make it so it's not redundant, because there's a lot of stuff that's redundant.
No, yeah, let, let's do it like this, it was a, a good working session, again, it's, you guys saw what we're gonna do. In reality, we're gonna just eliminate everything, and that'll be it. So we'll just present something super simplified to you guys next time, where they say, we're eliminating this one, and we're just gonna come up with a, with a better ordinance, and just regarding serescape.
So we'll, we'll just continue it for a little bit redefining and then approve it on the next one on January eighth.
So my proposal mostly is, if you wanted to take a look at it, and if there's anything that actually stands out to you, like, we should keep this area, and I'll do the same, maybe we can figure out where we want to incorporate that if it's not redundant, such as one of the examples I think was if someone were to relocate a house, maybe make sure that the house, I don't know, just something like that.
If there's something, then we just let you know, try to keep it.
If there's something that jumps out, but that's why we went over to it, at least the recommendation for the director is, we're gonna scratch pretty much everything on it.
So basically, you gave us homework over Christmas break?
No, that's, that, that, yeah, no.
Good call.
No. No, 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 what I, what I, what we meant, what we meant, I, I would hate to do that. What I, what I meant is just, we, we're kind of showing you a little bit of the back work that we do. It's not that we, sometimes when we present, say, hey, we're gonna eliminate this ordinance, and I like to make things super simple. It's not like just because we don't like it, but I just want you guys to know, there's, there's work behind it. So don't do anything unless something really jumps out of you. If not, that's why we went over it, don't do anything. We'll present something to you guys, as they say, we're gonna eliminate this code, and that'll be it.
The only suggestion I've got is the one about to human scale. We should change that to cubits, we, we should measure it in cubits and.
I really had a fantasy of putting a trailer.
In a ten-million-dollar property.
Oh, just as the ultimate.
But for example, we already have rules and regulations regarding that in every zone, so we don't have to keep, keep it right there, but yeah, we'll, we'll work.
All right, I'd entertain a motion then.
I move the planning commission, continue the request of Pleasant Grove City, right? It's written jury walker in here, just for, as note. Yeah, for its Code Text Amendment to Pleasant Grove City for a Code Text, oh yeah, to City Code Section ten-six-six-two, definitions to revise the definition of building, wait, wait, wait.
Wait, it's ten-dash-fifteen.
Sorry, we got the wrong one.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Thanks. Oh, gosh.
Most requests, whatever we were just talking about.
To request to amend City Code Section ten-fifteen-twenty-eight, Design Review, to amend or remove the requirements of the design of new buildings, including residences.
Oh, yeah, I completely.
I'll second. To allow us time to do our homework over Christmas vacation.
Okay, I have a.
Do it while you're watching Elf.
I have a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Butler and a second by Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then I would take a motion to approve the minutes from the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Patton and a second by Commissioner Martin, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to adjourn.
So moved.